United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I ask for a moment of silence for Basil McLean. He was the Fire Department Secretary and Life Member of the Eagles Number Two. Thank you. Rope.
Alderman Tobin, Alderman Jean-François.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step
Good evening. Kevin Gomez, Member of the Middletown School Board. I'm happy to be here once again in the People's House. And just to, and pleased to share with the members of the council that on February 16th, the Middletown Board of Education approved eligibility requirements for local volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers to receive a reduction in school taxes through the real property tax law 466A, which was enacted under chapter 670 of the laws of 2022. And those eligible can receive up to a 10% reduction on the assessed evaluation of their primary residence. I'll just give you a brief information. This, all of this is on the school district website. Okay? Basically, the resolution read as follows. The Board of Education of the Middletown City School District recognizes attracting and retaining quality volunteer firefighters. And emergency medical personnel is one of the most critical problems facing our communities today. Maintaining effective emergency protection for our school community depends on the ability to train and retain volunteers. Okay? And again, this was in response to tax law 466A, which was enacted in the year 2022 by the state legislature, signed by the governor. And this legislation allowed local governments to reduce what was previously a five per, five-year minimum service requirement for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers to be eligible for up to a 10% reduction on the assessed valuation of their primary residence. And the new legislation will allow minimum service requirements to be between two and five years. Basically, the authority having jurisdiction must certify, that is, the local municipality, that the volunteer is a member of the fire company, fire department, or ambulance service as applicable. Okay? And just to go briefly over the criteria, the volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers must reside within the Middletown City School District, be an active member of incorporated volunteer fire company or fire department, or incorporated volunteer ambulance service which provides services within the district, utilize the residence as their primary residence. Residents must obtain and display a certificate issued by the authority having jurisdiction for the unincorporated volunteer fire company or fire department, indicating that the applicant has been an enrolled member of such incorporated volunteer fire company or fire department for at least two years, or the applicant has been certified by the authority having jurisdiction for the incorporated volunteer ambulance service as an enrolled member of such incorporated volunteer ambulance service for at least two years. Okay? And in order to be eligible for the exemption annually, all of the criteria that I already mentioned must continue to be in place, and annual attestations are required. Okay? That's just some of the information. Again, there's more detail on the school district website. And also, the unmarried surviving spouses of volunteers killed in the line of duty, the surviving spouses eligible for the exemption if the deceased volunteer have been an enrolled member for at least five years, and deceased volunteer have been receiving exemption prior to his or her five years. And then unmarried surviving spouse of volunteers killed in the line of duty for 20-plus years, surviving spouses eligible for exemption if the deceased volunteer had been enrolled member for at least 20 years, and deceased volunteer had been receiving the exemption prior to his or her death. Okay? Again, our school district, our community values highly all the work and sacrifice of our volunteer firefighters. And again, as well as those members of our council here, like President Rodriguez, who I believe does serve in our community in that capacity, we're grateful, we're thankful. And I guess today I beat Jacob when it came to presentations.
Good evening. Susan Depew, 57 Prospect Street, Middletown. I'm here again to please ask all of our city residents, and every member of the council, and anybody that would like to help us, to join us for the Citywide Cleanup Day. It is on April 22nd, Earth Day, a perfect day to clean up the earth in our city. So we, we ask everybody to save that day, and all are welcome. It'll be at John F. Degnan's Festival Park from 9 till 12. We will outfit everybody who comes with a shirt, unless they have one from a previous year. And we'll give you gloves so that you protect your hands, and as many bags as you think you can fill with garbage, and a grabber to pick up the things off the ground to provide safety in your, in your hands. Okay? Thank you very much. We hope to see all of you, and we look forward to that great day to clean up the city.
Thank you, Susan. All right. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to the Department Heads,
Good evening, everyone. Last week, we had the groundbreaking for Sky Mendoza. It was great to see the participation and everybody that came out for that, and it was great to see Sky there with such a great, big smile. And we're looking forward to her home being right there on Broad Street soon. This week, we have the ribbon cutting at the former Tony Baffa's Restaurant. The Korean Restaurant is officially gonna have their grand opening and ribbon cutting, 75 Railroad Avenue. So this Thursday, 11:00 a.m., Yishan Korean Restaurant. So come join us for the, the ribbon cutting on Thursday. And also, tickets are going real fast for 1964 The Tribute, which is this Friday night at the Paramount Theater. So we got a lot going on this week, and hope to see everyone there. That's all I have.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. So we'll start off with the reservoirs level. Alderman Massey, we're still where we were two weeks ago, 89.7%. So we're, we're in good shape. With that, our Shuwangong dams, the three of them, the work is supposed to start. The contractor is gonna mobilize on Monday, February the 27th. And with that, you will see a lot of trails closures in there because we have to segregate the hikers from the actual construction site. It's gonna be on articulating trucks in there, which is, I mean, the tire is taller than me, running around. And a lot of heavy equipment are gonna be taking place in there and moving things around for the dam. So we urge everybody to be alert that is, that are using the trails, and just look out, obey the construction signs, the trail closure signs, fenced area, do not go in there, do not venture in there, please. It's gonna be quite, quite a risk if you go in there, and, and so stay away from that work area. So with that, it's gonna be three dams, they're gonna be upgraded. We will be lowering the water level in Shuwangong in there in order for them to get to the core of the dam, and raise the core of the dam, and then restore it and make it flatter, and add all the other appurtenances that are part of the project. I'm not gonna get into all of them right now. So we're looking forward to that. This is the first time since the year 1900, since any work has been done to that dam. So it's a very exciting time, and, and hopefully everything will move very smoothly, and we will have more robust dams once the project is completed. That complies with the DEC current regulations, not the 1900 regulations. And so, going back to the recyclables, again, we appreciate everybody that has listened to the mayor and myself talking about recyclables. Extremely important to segregate the municipal solid waste, the garbage, the household waste from the recyclables. Do not put the recyclables inside bags. Just put them, dump them inside the cart that was provided to you by the city. And otherwise, it's just, it's costing us much more money and much more work. So far, we are still getting hit. We segregate the garbage, the recyclables ourselves, ourselves right now, and most of it unfortunately is going to a landfill. So we urge you to work with us. The obvious recyclable cans that contain plastic bags, they were not picked up by DPW, by the sanitation department on Saturday. We went today, and we started picking up the recyclables, taking pictures of what's inside the cart. Well, we don't wanna punish or hurt anybody, we just wanna, you know, send the message. And you will be getting a letter from us, from DPW as a courtesy, as a warning. And after that, unfortunately, we're gonna have to start taking, you know, taking pictures and taking people to court in order to be fined, because it's just, it's, it's a big hassle. And Orange County Transfer Station will no longer accept our recyclables. And we're not the only ones in this problem. Many people, many communities around us, they have the same problem. So we urge you to go to our website, look at the brochure that we have, study it again. This is what the mayor said in the last meeting, this is what I said in our last common council meeting. Just study it, please, and just abide by it. It's very simple. I know you're doing your, your very best in there. You think by over recycling things that are not recyclables, that you're doing the environment a favor, and you're not. Unfortunately, we all have to educate ourselves about what's acceptable as recyclables. I'm sorry I keep repeating this, but it's very, very important. It's costing us a lot of money, a lot of effort, and we have to serve the environment, then we don't wanna waste everybody's effort in there because one or two persons, they dumped garbage in a tractor trailer. Yeah, that's what happens. Everybody's trying their best, they have recyclables in there to help the environment, and then a couple of people, they put garbage in their cans, we don't see them, they are already dumped, so the whole load is contaminated, and cannot go anywhere, cannot go to the recyclable for sorting out and recycling. So it's gonna end up in the landfill. Defeats the purpose of the whole community, just for a few people not following the law. I know you're trying, you mean well, so please help us out. The other, the other thing is, we have been doing, the, as you know, the water line project is winding down on Monhegan Avenue, Route 211, all the way up to the water treatment plant. There are some things yet to be done, some agreements, extended warranty that we are seeking. And with that, we have half a million dollar grant from the Empire State Development, and we applied for that half, half a million dollars. So hopefully that will be coming back to our water fund balance very soon. And we also applied for the EPA. We had to fill out the whole application for the grant for the three and a half million dollars for an additional water line replacement that was already approved by the Congress through the previous Congressman Maloney, and with the support of Senator Schumer and Senator Pat Ryan. And, and now, we applied for the grant. The application is in, hopefully we'll get the positive feedback from the EPA, and we can start the design work right away. Most of the survey has been done. Fireman Joe, the bids were open. I guess the fire, fire chief is not here to report on it. He's disappointed with the numbers, because they came in very high. It's $150,000 to restore the statue of Fireman Joe. And so we're looking, we're seeing, we're exploring different options right now to see what else we can do. Highland Avenue, repainting and refurbishing, pre-bid meeting has taken place. It was virtual because we have contractors from all over, painting contractors and steel contractors, and that went very well. So hopefully, we will get good numbers. Mountain Avenue Tank and High, and High Barney Tank Replacement, that project, we're almost ready to go out for bid right now. We're just finalizing the property acquisition. And we got the easement from, from Miller, and everything is moving along very well, thankfully. And with that, I will conclude. If you have any questions for me.
Alderman Jean-François.
Yes. Commissioner, if I was to fly, are we planning on doing this in Spanish?
We, we can. I'll, I'll try to locate one in Spanish.
Okay. And is, are you planning on sending it by mail, or just the website?
We're gonna be sending it with all rental permits. We're gonna be including that in the, in the next round of water bills. We're gonna be, you know, so we're, we're gonna, it's already on our website, it's been on our website. We have red warning in there for people to see it. We have sent an Excel message too, to remind people, we're gonna send it again and again. We're just gonna keep going at it. Yeah.
I gotta make you do beautiful work.
I think that's from Orange County. Thank you. I can't take credit for it. That's from Orange County.
Alderman Green.
Thank you.
Yeah. No easy way to word this, but do we know how long the dam project's gonna take?
What, are you cursing?
No, the dam project. I just mean the trail closures and that, for people who, for people who are expecting the, the trail.
We're just, we're just gonna make sure Alderman Kleiner, that he's not.
I'm not, I'm not cursing at him. But just for the trail closure purposes.
Probably towards, probably towards the end of November.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Alderman Kleiner.
Commissioner, on the, on this recycling guide, I did have the question from a couple constituents about shredded paper. And they use a shredding machine, and they have lots but, and, and it does say, paper shredded, okay.
Yeah.
But a lot of people take that shredded paper, and you don't wanna put it loose in the can, because if you dump it, it's gonna be snowing paper all over the street. So, but you can't, people have been putting it in a plastic bag, which you can't do either. So the word I got from the, I called the number for the Orange County Recycling Guide, and you can put it in a paper bag. So if you have shredded paper, and you don't want it going all over the place, but you wanna recycle it, then the, the word is to put it in a paper bag, and roll the paper bag.
Or, or any of these boxes that you have from Amazon. Everybody's getting boxes from Amazon. Just put them in the box, you know, the cardboard box from Amazon, any cardboard box, if not a paper bag.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, inside the.
In the box, as long as it's, as long as it's sealed up.
Before you crush it, yeah, before you crush it and all that. Or put it at the very bottom of the, of the, you know, however. But don't put any plastic, please.
Yeah, no plastic. And I would say don't put it in loose, because it is gonna go, if it's a windy day, it's gonna go all over.
It's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jacob, I wanna thank you and your department for not picking them up no more, and they should be written up.
Yeah, we did. Today, by the way, we, we covered the second and third ward today. We went and we picked it up, we're using our dump trucks, and we took pictures, and we took the addresses, and like I said, we're gonna, so you're very welcome. We're, we're trying our best, we wanna, we don't wanna hurt our people at the same time. We have, eventually, we have to send the message that, hey, it's really costing us.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Please, Chief.
Good evening. Just wanna encourage our residents to lock their vehicles. We do have an uptick in car larcenies, and it seems to be that people are going around just checking open doors, and taking whatever valuables they could take out of, out of those vehicles. So to try to minimize the victimization, if we could encourage our residents to lock those doors. An additional uptick is the theft of packages off of porches, and I know sometimes because of work schedules and whatnot. But whatever we could do to encourage our residents to get those packages to a safer location quicker, would definitely reduce those opportunities. It is very sporadic, but it is something that is driving our numbers up over the last month or so. It's not one specific location, it kinda bounces around. It's not a daily thing, but it is kind of a weekly situation. We're also seeing a little bit of an uptick in catalytic converters. Again, not one specific location, deaths with those, I mean. It's bouncing around, and when I look at our daily briefing, that's from the whole county, it's basically when we get hit, many of the other townships in the county are getting hit at the same time. It seems to be like a little ring that's moving around. We've had many videos and pictures of them. The plates on the vehicles that we capture are not the accurate plates. They're switched plates, so it's very hard to trace them back. But I encourage people to be vigilant. Whatever information they could provide to us would be greatly appreciated. Just wanna also remind the public that we do have a police commission meeting once a month, in which we highlight or go over the details of the police department, more specific and in more in detail. That's really one of the reasons why I don't give so many statistics or too much information at this meeting, is we do our own meeting once a month. The next meeting is March 16th, 4:30 p.m. They are aired, and it is open to the public. And then, other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions, or if you would like me to address the local law now or later.
Any questions for Alderman Kleiner?
Yeah, I think if you could address it now, so that, we, we do have a local law on the agenda that we had read last meeting, and we'll be voting on tonight. And it is about moving the fire police under the fire chief. So if you could just give us a little bit of background on that.
Yes. So we worked, myself, the mayor, fire chiefs, and Alex Smith Corporation Council, identified that in the city charter, the governing of the fire police was under the police commission. And we're just trying to realign it, that it goes over, that the fire chiefs become the authoritative body over them. The mayor would still be the appointing body, but rather than the police commission being the appointed body, it would be replaced with him. And then the language, all those paragraphs, some are actually removing the fire police from some paragraphs, where other are adding language into new paragraphs, that the fire police would fall under the fire chiefs. Then it just breaks down what their responsibilities are, their term, when they're gonna be appointed, how long the term is, the requirements for training, what's expected of them, what their duties and roles are, and whatnot. So it's really, in my mind, it's more common sense to put them under the people that actually oversee the fire department.
So they're not special police anymore?
So they've not been special police. There's a section of the charter that allows the mayor to appoint them as special police under certain circumstances, if I'm not mistaken, section 129. But there's gotta be circumstances that lead to that. They are considered peace officers while they are working in their capacity, but they also have to take the New York State Certified Police Peace Officer Training first, and the language is that they have to do that before they're sworn in. So there, it did clean up a lot of that language and make it more specific to their duties and roles and responsibilities.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have a question for the chief? Thank you, chief. City clerk.
Nothing this evening.
Any question for the city clerk? Alderman Witt?
Yeah, thank you. So regarding the, the April 22nd Citywide Cleanup, I'm beginning to get some interest and commitments from school groups. How would you like me to handle that?
Going live, hopefully tomorrow, will be signup genius. We utilize it for the first time during last year's spring cleanup, where people can select the areas in the city that they wanted to specifically focus in on. And the school district groups, and any of our community members out in the public that are listening tonight, will be able to start signing up ahead of time. We found that that worked a lot better than day of handing out assignments to folks. And some people take, took a little bit more pride and excitement in cleaning up areas that were specifically important to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right. Remarks of Alderman. Alderman Massey?
I do have something tonight. My good friend, Jack McMahon, who's been a Middletown resident all his life, loves Middletown, loves Orange County Community College, brought something to my attention. I really wish I'd have seen this someplace in the paper, but for whatever reason, the record just doesn't cover this particular item. The Orange County Community College, of which I am a proud alumni, their basketball team, 2022-2023 season, they are 27-0. They are ranked fourth in the National Junior College Association Division II. Thirteen players on the team, 10 of them right in this area. Romero Aquino, Region 15 Player of the Year, Tom Ricard, Region 15 Coach of the Year. Now, for anyone that's interested, this Saturday, the 25th, at Orange County Community College, the playoffs begin. It's free admission. Let's support our team. At 12:00 noon, the first semis, our Sullivan County Community College versus Westchester Community College. At 2:30, it's our Orange County Community College versus Rockland County Community College. The two winners, hopefully, our Colts will be one of them, are scheduled for Sunday, the 26th, at 2:30 at the Orange County Community College. It's just a shame that something that stands out like this, that we have the students, we have the athletes, we have their parents, and there's little to no coverage. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I'm thankful to Jack McMahon for bringing it to my attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Witt?
Yeah, thank you. I just, to follow up on what Alderman Massey said, Tom Ricard and his father before him have always had a commitment to bringing local players to that program. In fact, to the point where they actually increased their, their level of competition to Division II, so that they were able to offer scholarships and keep those people here. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. Alderman Kleiner and I will be holding on Monday, March 13th, 7:00 p.m., our second work constituents meeting. We took a few months off due to weather that we may or may not have had, but things are looking warmer and brighter later. So we'll be back here again. That's Monday, March 13th, at 7:00 p.m. And we hope to see you here. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I attended the groundbreaking for Bring Sky Home, for Sky's house. And I just wanted to remind people how that started. That started because Sky said, I wanna go home to Middletown. I believe she was up in Vassar, north of here, for quite a while, but she wanted to come home, and the community listened. So it's, it's, it's gonna be, really, her smile was unbelievable. It just lit up the day. So that's a great project. I also wanna mention Andy Mills and Dr. Fred Isicks will be at Thrall Library on March 1st at one, at, get that right, March 1st at 3:00 p.m. And they'll be speaking about Historic Hillside Cemetery. Though they have a lot of information on, on Hillside, the Calvert-Box Design Cemetery in Middletown. And that should be a very interesting talk. The Warming Station, it's really Turo people who are doing a health fair. And I hope I have the date right. February 26th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., it'll be Turo College, and Turo students, and Turo instructors. But it's a health fair, and it's, it's for the whole community. So anyone who, I know they give out free things, they have people to monitor and give advice. So that's happening 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on February 26th at the Warming Station, and that's a great community event to take advantage of. My other questions were for the mayor, so I'll save them for next time. Thank you.
Alderman Ray?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. The Maple Hill Pool Survey is out, and hopefully we'll get a good representation of our community as to what people think should happen there. The Orange Terrace application process continued at the ZBA last week, basically on the side of the community, with the same people that spoke at the planning board, and then spoke again at our, at our meeting. That hearing is still being held open, and will continue next month. And we'll see where it all ends. Thank you.
Alderman Jean-François?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up, Alderman Massey. I had the opportunity to enter the game last, past Thursday against Sullivan County, and I gotta say, it, it was a decent crowd, but they definitely could use more support of us. Thank you.
New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing a salary adjustment for the real property data collected.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Rope.
Jean-François?
Here.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Congratulations. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, authorizing offering a city-sponsored health insurance plan.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Ray. Any discussion? Rope.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, authorizing the purchase of AED's city facilities.
Second, Alderman Witt, I need a, I need another motion to amend it and add two more for the cost of?
$4,000, one for Watts Park, and one for Wolf Slayer Field.
So, motion by Massey, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 All right. Any questions on it? Rope.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Congratulations. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, accepting the attached list of volunteer firefighters for membership.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Alderman? Alderman Green?
I just want to make it known that my name's on the list, so I will be abstaining from the vote. Thank you.
We haven't done this in a while, so our city clerk picked us up, that we should acknowledge all the firemen that joined the fire department, so we'll be doing it again. Anyone else? Roll.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Epstein.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries.
Local laws?
We have a local law sponsored by Alderman Johnson, transferring authority regarding the fire, police to the fire department.
Do I have a second? Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.